Oh, I'm sorry. Don't let me get in the way. I want to go back through.
No.
Just speed was speeding up there.
Oh, yes.
Oh, see that car is yours to drive.
Yeah. He's coming by mail. Game just.
Sheriff from D. H. Hopefully no time to say.
Hopefully no time to say.
We've got them down there as backtalk dams now. And we said in conversation this morning, we're putting up all the signs. And you're matching your sign. Just do one over. And my people, they take me most of all day. Nobody care what they have on. I open and keep it free giving six miles or eight miles. Six miles. So give him permission.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yes, he appears to have the same problem. I'm trying to avoid all of them. This is what all are saying. We changed it to forty-five. What am I there? Or sixty-nine percent?
I've got one more. I want to take ten thirty. I'll take that one.
If you're again not gas. I don't have it. Get there. He wears black too.
He does.
Wearing black hat too.
Yeah. Making her come out a little better.
Great show up. More of it all the time.
With.
Oh, and I have one too. I did. Very well.
His request will be.
Because this picks up those cities apart from the county. We're still going to. One of the four out of town. Even if the lead case doesn't have video or something like that. That's just a request for payment. That's not the actual thing that.
Still, it should be.
We just need two.
Can you tell us just question? It's getting a bit on our side. I think we're going to be rather than watching man.
I hope so. We've been out here a few times to do it fast. My kids really enjoyed it.
A good place for a family activity.
Yeah. And then adding the. The counterparty along with the bands. I think it's going to be. It's got the potential to be really.
A lot of it's really big.
Yeah. Maybe not a food shop.
No. I think that'd be good. Now that could be a lot of metrics. I'm being very curious about what we're going to.
We'll call Megan Gordon. Young County Commissioner for State and General League. Monday, January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. It is nine thirty-two A.M. I'd like note that this proceeding posted commander for the time required. But all of course present at this convenience, please stand before. This is Mr. Rogers.
Hello, spring. Your heir and father, we just ask you to be with us this morning. God directs this is. We face issues, discuss issues of Laro County. Father, we just ask you to bless all those that are present. Father, we just ask you to comfort those that lost loved ones this last week. In this past few days. Father, we just ask you to lay your healing hand on those that are sick and ill. This past time. Father, we just ask you to watch over those that protect our freedoms. Father, we just ask you to forgive us where we've been. I want you to work your will in our lives. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the blood for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state under God, one indivisible.
Next item on the given item number three. Public comments, announcements, reservations. These are no action items. Uh, reminders and or. Events or things that the court should be aware of. Someone made some kind of comment. Only thing I have on here is Young County Masonic Lodge, number eight, four eighty-five. Thirteen thousand Masonic Lodge Scholarship Auction, March the fourteenth, twenty twenty. At the old Agbarn.
May I speak to that? Excuse me. May I speak to that?
Yes, you may.
Uh, this has been thirteenth year we've done this. Uh, Masonic Lodge, this is a consignment auction. We use all the proceeds from the auction for scholarships. We gave eleven thousand dollars in scholarships last year. Generated from money that we've taken from the auction. It's turned into almost a reunion type of thing. We have people. We sent out sixteen hundred letters from past participants. Come in and bring their items. I would urge each of the commissioners, if you have things in your yard that you need to dispose of, this auction will will work to dispose those items that you may no longer need that are surplus. They'll be sold here in this county. The money will be used here in this county. And it's a really good thing to do. It's a fun day. Uh, we will continue to have the gun auction as well as the other auction for the other eclectic items that are brought out there. And the Bethel Baptist Church will have the concession stand. So. Certain.
When is it?
March fourteenth, second Saturday in March.
And if you do have anything, just let me know because I need to publish it.
Be sure that.
And I need to be able to run the.
Make note to the auditor if there's anything that you do want to sell. Because they have to be advertised, they have to be advertised in sort of class.
And quick we can get it in, quick we can get it on the advertising sheets of the law firm.
We have to dispose out. Two weeks prior to the auction.
Thank you.
Is there anything else that might be mentioned? Anybody else mention this? We'll move on to item number four. Consider county clerk minutes previous meeting, January thirteenth, twenty twenty. Order any additions, delays, or corrections to. I have a motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Rogers to approve this minutes as presented. All in favor? Carry it. Item number five, consider credit financial report, updates on security pledges, lands.
Okay, I have the similar reports I've given to you. They're all working good. Um, we have. Debt service payment, which is due February. We're going to pay February third. Currently, in the debt service, we have eight hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars. The payment's seven hundred and forty-nine, two fifty. Yeah, that's interest and the principal. And. I guess that's it.
How many more of those payments do we have?
On point ten.
The debt service two more.
Until twenty twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Twenty-three.
Then the next payment will just be interest only. You just have the long term.
I just want that directly. So we're getting close.
Yeah, we're getting close.
Motion of Commissioner Wiley, second of Commissioner Rogers to. Approve the financial report as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Item. Okay. Another item bullet point below that is to discuss consider historical. Young County Historical Commission, temporary reimbursement of that big Susan Smith, I believe, in an hour of one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and she gets cents off his account. I move to re-grant that reimbursement. Second.
She did have a request. I don't think it's a big issue. She thought it was wasteful to keep their post office box. So I don't think it's a problem. She uses my post office box. Because she said she only gets like six items in the whole year. So as long as I put her as a recipient to my post office box for this. She thought it was a reason.
Second. Motion of Commissioner Sykes, second by Commissioner Cruz, approve the reimbursement as requested. Susan Smith in one hundred and twenty-nine dollars, seventy-six cents out of this court commission account. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry it. Item number six, consider auditor pledge amendments and vouchers paid.
Always a voucher. Keeps us going. The total of vouchers is one hundred and forty-nine thousand, three seventy-four oh five. And out of the general is one hundred and eight thousand, three ninety thirty-three. And there is some.
Sure, but there's a voucher.
There's no.
My second, thank you. Motion of Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Sykes, approve the. Vouchable as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry it. There wasn't one budget in.
Yes, sir.
Item number. Seven. Consider employee bonds, Amber Nicole Young, assistant county treasurer, and allowed five thousand dollars. Go move. All in favor? All in. Ballot bond. Does the motion allow him to serve? Prove. Like Roger. Second by. All in. Five hours. Item number eight is discuss consider enrollment, young county employees, certified cyber security training, offer of attack. It's a state mandated thing that we offer that. Cyber security training. Now that. We'll address that this morning.
At this time, I just need the commissioner's permission to get started on getting the enrollment started. That was House Bill thirty-eight thirty-four. It's an hour long training. We can do it from the internet, but I need each employee that accesses one of our computers. She must do that. If we win.
The June. June. What's the deadline on? June.
June, June fourteenth.
Is that what New calls to us to fight tax? Whether it's.
Tax.
Yeah, tax. One of the. One of certified people to offer that training.
Every time I say the word, man, they.
It's, it's, they're taking care of the course, so.
Okay, we have a motion of Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Sykes. To allow enrollment of young county employees for certified cybersecurity training. It's going to be offered by TAC or if it is offered by TAC, we'll schedule that.
Of course, make it once I get.
There's a lot of counties already registered in front of us.
Yes, I hate it that.
All right. Should we get signed this payment from our Clara Road crew about not getting on our.
I'll ask about that, but I believe that's going to be direct. But I will have all the proper paperwork together from this time for fifteen minutes. The enrollment.
Because there's a time when they chase parts manuals and parts list.
Exactly.
Oh, on the county computer. But if they get on the county computer.
Then they may just need to go ahead and take the training.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt. You know, it's just.
Yeah.
For us.
I can schedule it after I have the training session.
Do they get stuff emailed soon?
No.
They maybe don't have the email.
But they do check out problems with equipment, things like that online, get an expanded schematic or something that's.
And they find parts.
Or chase parts, yeah.
It is pretty safe, I guess, all of them do that.
I just, I just need to know what rules to make and how we need to buy that.
We'll take care of that. We just need to get the approval of the court for me to get started.
Go. I've got five on both of that, right? Item number nine, discuss consider leasing SO vehicles from Mark McLeish. Right at Blacktop here. Sheriff.
Master. Master.
Sometimes he just like to. Look, there was three different. Billy come up with three different bids on different types of vehicles. We. The ones. The ones that were, that were really concerned with that we talked about the other day was the. Two thousand seventeen Silverado pickup.
Yeah, because that's the one payment came up. It'd be similar. And then the one that's due in July is another loan type.
And then the other one was the two thousand eighteen Chevy Tahoe. That was coming up in July, I believe. It was also vehicles that was in question. But then I also had another vehicle that's on patrol, two thousand thirteen. That has approximately a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it right now.
So the ones that goes up, you're going to take out a separation that.
Well, we. We. We live on Luther. Yes, sir. But. Does Holliday do that? I have, I'll have to go check with the C. You want me to do that? Remember. Oh, I know I can do that. I can check with the C.
We bought it out of solid eight.
But it was in.
Right, it was not here. I can check with the C just. Getting owed it.
I think that would be pretty good to do that.
But anyway, what I'm trying to do is we've got to do something with these. Either turn them back in and get a, you know, on that lease program bill we have going. Or sell them outright. Tell us, tell us what you got now. Okay. Twenty-eight. I have that twenty-eight, twenty-seven finished Chevy Silverado. That's the one that the notes do on the.
Nine thousand.
Which we have to do something, you know. From what I was told, we have to do something about that one.
Well, he said that.
He would.
He would carry.
Yes, sir.
As long as you had somebody else.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
Now, the other one is a two thousand eighteen Chevy Tahoe. That's coming up in June or July, I believe July. On its loan though. It has sixty, whenever we were here the other day, it has sixty-two. Four eighty-five. Um, but then I have that two thousand thirteen Chevy Tahoe that's on patrol right now with over a hundred and fifty on it.
Eighty though.
Oh, yeah.
Take bids or trade in.
Could the eighteen be used to replace the thirteen? Good, if we keep it, yes, sir. Well, again, we have to, we still, we don't have the extra vehicle, so.
Understand. If we keep that eighty, young.
If we do give that two thousand eighteen. To replace that Silverado, then I still have to get something for that to replace that two thousand eighteen. But you've got. Chevy Tahoe is on the black pile. The white one. Hundred and fifty. It's going to have more than that. Lot off it. How many miles it has on it?
I think we talked about last time, eighty-year-old.
We had talked about it. But it was also, I was, I. Overlooked this two thousand thirteen that's in the on patrol. That high mileage. And I would rather replace it. And wait till a later date to replace that bottom if we can. I don't know. And we can replace it, but that would be.
The bottom's not on patrol.
No.
But we could take it, like Mike was saying, we could take that two thousand eighteen and replace that pickup. Okay? Then I'd have to buy.
The patrol vehicle.
And then I could do, I could give mine to. The admin and replace that white one. Then I'd have to buy me, we'd still be, we'd still have to get three vehicles. Which would be, make better sense to keep that and give it to one of the patrol and then replace. That one and then replace that two thousand thirteen. And then give him my pickup. But I can get other bids if you want me to.
If we don't keep everything rotated for a while.
Oh, that's, that's going to be all the same thing. Yes. Better than the last one we sold.
Yeah, we finally ended up, we went out for bids for a lot of didn't get it. But then we.
Now we're not.
Put them back through again and we got.
Blow us out of order?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're the option. Bend of this.
We got deals.
Exactly.
Right, first let's see.
That would make the better way of just, you know, and I can type that up if y'all want me to. Which ones that I'd like to get rid of and propose and give it back to y'all. With the extra bid that you want me to give Holliday? Yeah, with that, come with with me a little bit, I might. Another idea. Okay. Another.
What would that happen if you think of that?
If they do it, that would be great. We can give a bid from below. Right.
And he can get the police to be happy with it. Well, that's, we used to supply it out of White.
Yeah, they're just saying people don't.
You looking at someone at auction or someone vehicle?
That'd be, oh, I mean, I would say what we should do, if we're going to have these vehicles that will sell, we need to give Billy a chance of what he's going to give us. And then if we don't think that's good enough, then go out like we did last time. Right. And he offered us more than what we. Last time.
And Martin.
If we're thinking, if you put on one space to do the same.
Yes, sir.
Thirteen.
Would, would you be taking equipment off?
I don't, we would, we would have to put, we, if we're going to take the equipment off of what we have now and put on to the new ones as far as that goes. Because if we replaced a bunch of stuff, it'd be all. I don't like replacing it for a while.
I think moving your admin stuff out of service, put the dome patrol is a good way to finish using of the vehicle.
Well, that. Well, if we, anything that we take off admin needs to be sold. Because it's all, everything we have, except what John.
Was the twenty eighteen not on admin this?
No. It's on patrol. That's the one that I, that I had been originally driving.
So you took.
We put it.
Those as admins?
And we take, take that patrol car, give it to the other patrol guy who's driving that pickup that we're going to have either rotate it or sell it. And then buy another one to replace the Tahoe and give him. And then I have to replace. That, uh, if I give like what Jimmy and I were talking about. Rotate my pickup to the other admin and then get another vehicle. That would, that would get rid of, um, that two thousand thirteen and that Silverado pickup. And that high mileage white Chevy that we've had since two thousand nine.
It's, yes, that's.
You, you talk back to. Okay, yeah. I'll, I'll maybe do the same thing. You know, they are, they are. Anyway, that's where we're at. I just, and I know we've got to do something for that model for sure, that Silverado. Yep, I'll go check with. The, the, y'all stop. Okay, sir, thanks. Good.
He quite put this on hold until after dinner.
Close. He really going to get rid of it.
He can.
Oh, he does. He can, he does everything.
Can you know?
Item number ten. Discuss consider resolution eight two one, designating signature authorities for. Texas Community Development Block Grant. This is actually. Pertinent to the level of water supply. That all of that activity must circulate to the county government to actually grant the waiver. Commissioner Riley pointed out that we. We have the county judge, county treasurer, and county flutters on there that's left off the county auditor. So. And here's a request to allow the county auditor to this. Circuit Board this. That would be relevant. That would be relevant in the financial aspect of it, the contractual aspect of it. County clerk would be at it. So we'll add county auditor.
Also, Deborah suggested we have two people from each office. I'd like to put Nikki from my office in case I'm out of town or something. We only have five days.
I, I think that would, I think that would be your authority to grant her the signature party, I don't know if I'd really do that, you can do that in your office as a deputy treasurer. Okay, I, I, and I think that we need to declare this as the county treasurer or their assigning county auditor or the auditor's assigning. Myself as the county judge, county judge being me or my, I, I, I think I need, I don't know, there usually is need for two of us to name. Contractually, it becomes the
The way I understood it, you have to authorize the payment and we have to authorize. You have to be on every one.
Otherwise, we'll leave the county judge, county treasurer, county auditor, and the county clerk to leave them all on there. All right, thank you. Any other things?
That motion is the aforementioned list of signatories needed through?
I'll second it.
I'll second it. Paul and Parker?
Aye.
Clear file, okay. Item number eleven is discuss, consider resolution dedicating to the east yard of Young County Courthouse as Young County Veterans Memorial Plaza. Ms. Rita and Bobby's here too, welcome.
We have Toby, Toby Riddell's here, he's the chairman, and we also have...
Uh, we've reviewed the resolution.
I have, it sounds great.
I guess we, in order first to pass this resolution, that page of that east yard is the veteran, Young County Veterans Memorial Plaza.
We did that last meeting over here far down at the side of the...
Yeah, we did that.
We can, then I'll second it.
Okay.
Not a bad thing to do in White, this is gonna make the resolution...
Two needles in to the point.
Okay, we're gonna ratify... Ratify resolution. Paul and Parker?
Aye.
That was, uh, Bob and Riley?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, Riggs is gone. Bobby, you're going to make some kind of proposal to the commissioner's court here, I think. Okay, that right there?
You do, some kind of proposal. I'm always here with boards and that show and tell.
Some kind of something.
Some kind of something, you're right. But I wanna thank you first. That was, that was huge, you know. I hope you all feel great about that as we do Young County Veterans Memorial Plaza. And you'll be at, forever. Kinda goes with the legacy of the walls and bricks, so thank you for doing that and I wanna thank you for the continued support you've given us over the last few years. I think we've all joined together to do something really great. Uh, in that, I had sent, and I know before when I was here, uh, before President Sucker Lee, uh, and got the permission, we'd let you know we're gonna do the brick drive. And Bobby, Joe and I got started on all the details getting that logged. You could ask someone on here, a commissioner, could ask about, what about the commissioner's court doing something sort of tangible for the brick thing? And I said, I got something in mind. Well, when I get something in mind, it can grow. So this is, this is something that's really exciting to us. Toby and I've kinda hashed over it the last week. And we are proposing first, first that you all, you know, if you'd like to do something for and step up and sponsor support, pay the cost of the materials, along with materials and labor, to make this happen. And you've all got a sample in there, I think, or, you know, the one that I sent. This is basically what that is. I thought a little bit bigger might help you see it. When you walk out there to the far end, um, there's a nineteen by sixty.
Rita, hold the...
Come on, Bobby.
You're not gonna get closer than that. She's a crook.
I'm a crook. She's a large crook. Yeah, we know. Crook. See, um, that, that nineteen by sixty spot, years, you know, a couple of years ago, I thought, you know, that's gonna have something special. And so we started in the middle to tie together the two walls. That's the reason we had that middle section. We really needed to tie those two walls together. That's good. So now it's time to get that front in, and that's what I was talking to you before. And our, our, our original goal was one, um, one fifty-five. And so that goal would have covered all of that. Well, now we can kinda readjust that goal, although we would love to get that in the next week. And we're at about fifty, about fifty bricks now, so that's good. But with this endorsement where you're gonna encourage the brick project be supported, um, you know, with newspapers, do it, we're gonna have Knox Bishop and Toby are each going on radio this week and then next week. They'll, they'll shout it up. To get the word out, this is our last push. The brick drive actually ends Friday. Um, there may be a little leeway the next week on that. We've sensed, um, and instigated and decided there would be a nonprofit brick. Got taken, you know, the, the Evening Lions Club particularly, had sent us a brick order and I thought, you know, there's a lot of little nonprofits that can't afford the plaques. So we wanted to do something special to allow them to do that. And that's this eight by eight brick. So this eight by eight, which is twice the size of the four by eight, uh, is the same price, but only nonprofits can get that brick. So that's the size. It would not be that color, it will be the same as this. So if nonprofits do that, we'd step back. We'd, we'd got one more section filled. The bricks will carry us down in another section. We get that for nonprofits. We'd fill it with just nonprofits. And then the next one, as you're walking from the courthouse out, would be this. That's an entire section. And this, uh, you know, have you all, were you able to read it in there? What it says? Okay, just a quote that says it all, I think. So that quote, the county seal at the top, that's an entire section. The, um, this is called an array. That array would be out of these eight by eight bricks. This is a different color than that, which would make it stand out a little bit. There's yet a lighter color that I'm going to send, ask them to send us to look at. I think the lighter color may have more gray, but I don't... So anyway, we're working with that as far as the coloring to make that pop out, which would mean this would pop out.
So that'd be in contrast to the rest?
Be in contrast to the rest of all of the stuff. And so then that's the section. This section would, you know, be laid right up against this, and this section would be the twelve by twelve. And that would take more twelve by twelve array. And across that would say, welcome to the Young County Veterans Memorial. I think you all mentioned, I know the newspaper said you mentioned a sign designating this area. There's your sign.
There's your sign.
Always wanna say that, yeah. So, um, so that's the proposal. Now, to do this will cost between eleven hundred and twelve hundred dollars, materials and laying it. I met Billy Sullivan out at the sidewalk a few weeks ago, showed him, he and I talked about it because I asked his advice as far as opposed to using twelve by twelve or the eight, you know, where he, he, and make sure that he was comfortable about them being laid in those spots. And this is what we came up with. So that can happen for twelve hundred dollars, you're just done, or, you know, the, the quotes are always tentative until you put that order in.
Okay, and your, your request, sorry, for the court to sign that?
Correct.
Okay, I, I don't, don't think that we can make that kind of donation. However, being the square is what it is, um, the court probably could be authorized to contract for sidewalk improvement on our building grounds. Uh, and we may be able to swing that.
Please think of the landscaping, or make, bring them over to the courthouse.
So we just think the bill comes to us?
We're really not authorized to dominate tax dollars, but...
So the bricks are us, we send that bill to you?
Yes.
Actually, when, when the order's put in, it prints out, Bill. And then we have to get that bill to you because it has to be paid before they, we can send the order, but they obviously don't do anything until the check's down.
But that bill needs to be laid up to Young County.
Yeah, okay. I'm sure I can have them do that. Is there any time lags in this, by doing that? Is there, I mean...
I'm actually...
Oh, yeah, I'm sure that I can do the checks.
You know, trust funding, general funding to cover what we thought would be the, or courthouse grounds.
Budgets and buildings and improvements.
That's, okay, yeah.
So those money are in the budget. You know, I, you know, I really would like, I'd like the services to be, we can contract with him to provide that service for us.
He's, he's charging, I think it's, it's about, he's charging the cost, it covers all the materials.
Just to put all those things together into that maximum quarter.
Yep, okay, okay. We can do that. We feel like we can live that enough and it sounds like it'll, okay? We got any questions about any part of this break?
I would say I've already got a big lot and the sun's had a little brick garden, so I'm gonna ask that one.
That's right, I know my house.
I'll do it. I'll do it. Now, the eight by eight, you can put twice as many lines on it?
Yes, the, you can put, actually put six lines on that.
Sixteen characters?
Uh, eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, so it's the same, you know, lining. But you can put six lines. And the Grandma Evening Lions were very happy when I called and said, guess what?
Yes.
We've doubled the size of your brick. They redid their, their statement. We redid their statement and it said, uh, you know, it was, it was just really great. Young County Evening Lions, support Young County Veterans.
Yeah, y'all got a big one?
I will got a big one.
So you wanna run, Matt, you wanna run out and fix your nonprofit, so you'll get a big one?
Sure.
Big though, maybe he was a nonprofit.
Yeah, I'm here to tell a few people. Well, I understand that you're a dividend, but, and you may not be making a profit, but that's different for another. I understand that piece.
They grab four and breaks, they just want to do it.
Right.
There's nonprofit food.
It's still that.
There's nonprofit, there are breaks.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
Oh, goodness.
Those are samples.
Those are samples.
Right.
I was like, uh-oh.
That's right. So any further questions?
Uh, hang around.
I will.
Before you go, you got a question for him?
No.
Then, before you go, let's read this resolution.
Yes, that'd be great.
This is Young County Commissioners Court, F K D, East Yard of Young County Courthouse as Young County Veterans Memorial Plaza, resolution number seventy-four, that's why I'm pointing. Whereas, uh, the Young County Veterans Memorals are an asset to the county and a point of pride for the citizens of this county and our communities. And whereas, under continuing leadership of Young County Citizen Volunteers, this area hosts veterans, veteran and military events and activities that demonstrate a continuing and overwhelming support of Young County citizens to recognize all Young County veterans, past, present, and future. And whereas Young County and the Veterans Memorial Committees, meaning the old committee and new ones, encourage citizens to continue demonstrating their support of our veterans and military through the memorial brick program developed by the New Century Veterans Memorial Committee by purchase of an engraved brick for placement on Memorial Plaza sidewalk. Now therefore, be it resolved, the east yard of Young County Courthouse lawn being is hereby dedicated as Young County Veterans Memorial Plaza. Signed this twenty-seventh January, twenty twenty. Appreciate your work. Thank you.
Back to you for the board.
End of motion, end of second.
Let's go in and give our authority.
I'll, I'll take care of that. Just make the motion.
So much.
President, Congress. To authorize sidewalk improvement? Sidewalk improvement. Now, do you wanna set that figure?
Twelve.
Twelve there? In the amount of twelve hundred dollars. Okay. Paul and Parker?
Aye.
To be paying out the grounds maintenance for the...
Yeah, it does, we come out with building ground maintenance. Okay.
Get the resolution.
Wait, um, discuss, consider, learn.
I see no action.
No action. Motion, Riley, send it through it. Return. Paul and Parker? Three, two.
Easy. We're fully...
Um, Judge, just one more question.
One question I should have asked in time. Um, we will need a written permission to use the seal, the logo. Bricks are us require some permission to use that logo before that all is ready.
From the, from the...
From the...
Count, from you.
What do you want to say?
I think it's, I think it's probably in the public domain anyway, but...
I took it off my husband's business card. So... I'm sorry, I did not get permission.
That's gonna be awful, like that.
Okay. That's right. I did tend to worry about that line.
That's Mr. Nickel, then.
Does anybody win seven, I'll eat it.
Rita? I'm ready.
You want to take the...
They...
Sure you do.
Yeah.
I got more.
The nonprofit, because we got yours, but we had your order.
I'll be watching that, yeah.
It's not a profit, you don't... Here's the right one. No, we're stupid. Oh, that's okay, that's okay, she's got something.